Good evening. And welcome to the special call City Council meeting on July 20, 2023. Thank you, Mr. Wade, for your countdown.
Yes, sir.
Kind of scary. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Melanie Wright and Micah Sterling of the Hannah House, which is a maternity home for women who have chosen life when faced with an unplanned pregnancy. Please rise.
Please join me in prayer. Lord, we come before you to pray over this community. We ask that your Holy Spirit is present and guiding us tonight. We know it says in your word that if my people, who are called by my name, will humble themselves to pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, I will hear from heaven, I will forgive their sin and heal their land. Lord, forgive us for we have failed you. As we come together to make decisions for the future of Longview, I pray we seek your will and your guidance. I pray for the City Council and all the members who have a voice to make this great city only better. May you direct them as they seek to follow you with every decision made. Lord, I thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to make a difference where we live. May each day we live to help others, lift a helping hand in time of need, and always working together on the journey through life. Bless this meeting and thank you for the people that you have stationed here and before us tonight, Mayor Andy Mack and our devoted City Council. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you all. We are to sit us in a comment, and I do not have any speaker cards. I would like to just take a moment and just recognize former Councilwoman Kristina Shihara, who's in the audience tonight, and also introduce you all to our new pars guy. His name is John Albertson. He took John Anderson's place that I said last meeting. Why y'all let me say Anderson? His name is Albertson. Okay? So John Albertson's our new pars guy. Anderson left. He didn't like it here. So, welcome, John. Glad to have you back. Sorry about that. I apologize. You know, it's kind of like when you're jibberdab, someone got to tell you you did something wrong. No one will tell me I did something wrong, you know? So I have to go about this for like a week and go, wow, I really messed that up. So I apologize, my friend. Thank you and glad you're here. Weird how the presentation of the proposed 2023-24 budget, City of Longview, Mr. McPhee.
Good evening, Mayor Mack and City Council. It is my honor to present to you the budget proposal for fiscal year '23 to '24. It's my intention to review our current fiscal year and the things that we have experienced and to review the steps that we've taken thus far to bring us to this point, as well as to highlight a few proposals from the proposed budget. This year, I think everyone's excited about that. COVID is finally over, so it is officially ended. We're thrilled about that. But the reality is we still have continuing challenges brought on by the pandemic. We continue to have inflationary pressures beyond our expectations. We have supply chain woes, which affect not only project delivery but infrastructure repair. And we have a low unemployment rate, which is a great thing for our economy. However, it, we struggle to find recruits and to retain employees in this heightened job market due to us being laggards in pay. The silver lining is that those vacancies have really helped us absorb those vacancies. The vacancies have helped us absorb the inflationary pressures. I'd like to take a moment to do a flashback to last fiscal year slide. This was the last fiscal year slide for the disposition of the ARPA funds. And if you recall, we had $5.5 million ending that we were keeping to leverage in this coming year's budget. But I want to remind Council, of that $5.5 million, we spent about $900,000 to $1 million in partnership with the county to replace our antiquated command bus for emergency operations that are mobile, as well as to add an updated Bearcat for the police and sheriff's department use. So we're thankful for that partnership. That does leave the remaining 4.63 to leverage in this coming year's budget. So earlier this year, as I have done in past years, we met or heard from each of you to determine your priorities for the coming budget year. I am happy to say that nearly all of those requests that were brought forward are included within this budget, and all of them that are listed on this slide are included as part of this budget. Last year, the main priority was to address public safety pay. This year, it was definitely a priority to implement an across-the-board raise for all of our employees and to assist with the rising cost of living, that in this year alone has reached approximately 4%. In addition, it was a priority of mine that we bring the remaining employees, general government employees, up to 95% of the market pay rate that is a council-set policy. Additionally, we need to continue to absorb those inflations through efficiency of operations, and we need to maintain the Drainage Capital Improvements Program and minimize the financial burdens on our residents as well as our ratepayers or customers. The General Fund Overview is a balanced budget. There is $95.7 million in proposed revenues, and there is $95.7 million in proposed expenditures. You'll notice the ending fund balance remains unchanged from our projected end of year to the projected end of next year with the proposed budget. I'd like to take a moment to talk about the ARPA funds, the $4.63 million. We are proposing to leverage the remainder of those dollars, which have to be allocated before the end of this year. $1 million to the drain, to the general operations of the city, which I will detail in the next slide, and then maintaining the capital improvements in drainage, as well as our reinvestment in the water and sewer utility infrastructure. If you'll recall, one of the things I said last year was that our one-time revenues should match our one-time expenditures so that we don't create a fiscal crisis in the future. I'm happy to say that this year's budget of $1.00 million in one-time revenues matches our one-time expenditures. The next piece of the proposed budget that I want to highlight, highlight is the salary increases and the pay plan implementation. In this budget proposal before you, there is a proposed 5% pay increase across the board for public safety and all other general government employees. Additionally, there are pay adjustments that will be given to the employees that don't yet reach 95% of the market pay plan with the 5% raise. The impact to the General Fund budget is $3.7 million. For reference, the impact to last year's across-the-board raise, as well as the police and fire pay plan implementation, was $3.3 million. One thing I'd like to talk about in this proposed budget year is the Health Fund. Due to the exceptional management of the Health Fund, they have built a healthy reserve fund for the Health Fund balance, and in spite of the rising costs for healthcare that have swept the country, there is no need for a rate increase for either the employee nor the city's contribution. This year, there are a couple initiatives that I think we need to prioritize related to public safety, health. Not only has the state legislature prioritized this, it is imperative that we do the same. Recruiting is important, but retaining our employees by investing in their health is just as crucial. Over the past few years for the Fire Department, we have invested, invested in additional sets of bunker gear. We have installed extractors to get carcinogenic materials from the clothing after, out of, once they've been served in a fire. We've maintained the replacement of the self-contained breathing apparatus so the firemen can continue to do their job. We furnish fire boots that don't burn, so when they're deployed on wildfires, we can protect them that way. And additionally, our ambulances are equipped with striker cots, which have avoided back injuries by assisting in lifting of patients into the ambulances and out of their homes. In this year's proposal, I'm including two initiatives. The first is the remaining piece of equipment is for cleaning carcinogens out of their helmets. That's the last piece of equipment that we need to do that job. Also, before we get into the details of the next program, I want to notate and remind everyone that the COVID pandemic created a toll on our medics. It created a toll not only in the medical sector and in the private sector, but many firefighters and paramedics are resigning from fire service that have the medic service component because of the increased calls and trauma associated with that service. As such, it's my recommendation that we provide incentive pay to encourage that service on the ambulance and to prevent burnout to ensure retention of our firefighters. There are other cities within our area that have implemented this incentive as well. The next part of the public safety, health investment that I'd like to discuss is for the Police Department. Many of the recent initiatives that we've done on the Police Department are being done with the new police station that's being constructed now. There's a recovery room where our officers that are involved in a traumatic event can have time to recover and decompress from those situations that none of us like to talk about. There's also a lactation room to provide space for mothers to ensure the health of their families. There's also an exercise room. In the exercise room, the existing Police Department has an exercise room, but it is small, and I will tell you, just to be quite frank, they have junior high school-sized lockers. The new Police Department will have larger lockers that hopefully they'll be able to bring the additional equipment they need to take advantage of the exercise equipment and room. Lastly, stairs, and it's kind of one of those that we all got a little bit of a chuckle about when we talked about, but that's not just passive. The Longview Police Department will continue to encourage their employees to use the stairs and get that extra bit of activity. Two items are included in this coming year's budget proposal. And I'm going to talk about something that we don't like to talk about a lot of times, but our police officers in that profession suffer some of the highest rates of heart attack, diabetes, and many mental health issues from their service. Statistically, these are some of the most unhealthy occupations. In response, this budget aims to improve both their physical and mental health. Particular initiatives to address these are as follows. The Physical Fitness Incentive, which is a voluntary program that would be set up by the Chief of Police and his staff, and one of the main things it will do is create an incentive for officers to be enrolled and meet certain performance initiatives associated with physical fitness. And for any of you that have watched the tragic video of the officers responding to the Allen tragedy, you'll see just how important physical fitness is in service. The second thing that we're going to do is, with your approval, is to provide a licensed counselor that would be available four times a year. We have employee assistance programs available by phone, and we have other things, but a lot of times it's harder to reach out, especially when you're dealing with the trauma that these officers deal with. So it's going to be a licensed counselor coming onboard four times a year to provide increased access. The next slide before you is a common slide that you've looked at before. The proposed tax rate remains unchanged, and the debt services and the M and O rate remain largely the same. It's worth noting and highlighting that in the past decade, our property tax rate has only increased due to voter-approved investments within our community. 57.89 is the proposed total tax rate, as shown on the previous slide. Our tax assessor will be calculating the no-new revenue rate and voter approval rate once the final certified values are, are delivered. We don't believe the proposed rate of 57.89 will be a problem with either of those thresholds set by the state legislature. The next graph is just to show you what a great job that, quite frankly, Angela Cohen has done in predicting sales tax revenues. You can look from FY '21 to '22 to the current year and our projections for the current year ending and the projections for FY '23, '24. We do anticipate a slight increase in sales tax, however, not near the one experienced in our current fiscal year. This has been a stable form of revenue for the city to continue to provide its services. One encouraging note is that sales tax revenues have not only returned to, but have surpassed pre-COVID levels and are in growth mode. And I think that's really important when it's instrumental in providing the services we provide. The next slide details a pie chart of the FY '23 and '24 General Fund revenue, basically a third sales tax, a third property tax, and a third permits, fees, and fines. The next slide details the $95.7 million in proposed expenditures, which is the exact same and is the balanced budget, with 61% of that being devoted to the primary mission of public safety. The next chart is a General Fund Reserve Balance chart that shows when we actually plan to allocate portions of fund balance for coming year's one-time expenditures. You can see that the last time that was significantly done was in 2020. There is no proposed use of the fund balance in this current year proposed budget. I would like to note that the required 10% is $9.6 million, and the city currently has approximately $20 million in excess of the minimum fund balance reserve. The next thing I'd like to talk about is the proposed utility rates, FY '23, '24. The last water and sewer rate charge was in 2020 fiscal year. There is no water or sewer rate change proposed in the current fiscal year budget. By using the ARPA funds to reinvest in the water and sewer infrastructure, we are able to defer what would be a required rate increase and prevent those increased costs to our customers. Providing this relief of our ratepayers is exactly what I believe the federal government intended with the ARPA funds, going right back to the people who pay them. However, the same cannot be said for sanitation. In recent years, City Council chose not to raise our customer rates because of the financial strain of the COVID pandemic and the inflationary pressures. With that in mind, we have absorbed increased costs for several years, but it is no longer sustainable. Just these increases alone, if you add labor and supplies to these, would equate to a total of $2, nearly $2, $1.98 of monthly cost of service charges that we have absorbed over the past couple of years. Fortunately, we were able to use the remaining ARPA funds innovatively, and by doing so, we were able to minimize the financial impact to our customers, again, as I believe the federal government included, intended. The proposed sanitation rate for residential customers would be an increase of 85 cents per month, and the proposed commercial sanitation rate would be an increase of $2.20 per month. As a point of reference, the, this slide shows our rates compared with area rates and competitive rates. Even with the proposed rate increase, our rate is incredibly affordable, especially when you consider the expanded services that we offer, which include the compost, bulky item pickup four times a year at no charge, and subsidized mattress pickup fees, to name a few. In conclusion, the FY '23, '24 total budget presented before you is a total budget of $217,360,752 across the General Fund and other funds. I'm hopeful that this budget proposal addresses your City Council priorities. I believe it provides the financial support to recruit and retain the exemplary workforce that our citizens have come to expect and to minimize the financial burden to our residents and customers as much as possible. The remainder of the budget calendar is August 10th for the preliminary vote on the tax rate and the secondary budget discussion, and August 24th, which is the public hearing on the tax rate, the budget, and hopefully the adoption and adoption of the tax rate. This concludes my presentation. I certainly appreciate each of your attention.
Ron, I appreciate the budget and I appreciate everybody that's worked so hard on this. Once again, it's such a long, arduous process that just takes so much time, but the fruits of the labor are very evident here. Just a few quick comments. I want to, I want to congratulate you all on a good budget, no, no increase to our citizens in the tax rate. The sanitation rate, it's a very understandable, but it's a minimal 85 cents per month. And for what we get and give to our residential customers, the free mattress pickups, it's worth more than 85 cents a month to haul off your own mattress, or if you had to do something like that. It's understandable, and I appreciate the fact that we have absorbed that $1.98 for the last couple of years because we were able to, but it's time to get back square again. And I think this is a very workable plan. I, I'd like the pay, the pay plan where we get our employees up to where they belong and try to keep and retain those employees because we have the best employees around, and we don't want them going anywhere else. The Health Fund is an incredible accomplishment because we don't have to have any increase from either the employees or the city, which shows excellent planning in the last few years for our health plan because the rising cost of healthcare is exorbitant, and we don't have to see any of that. And lastly, to have a $20 million excess over our fund balance just shows just how well we're doing as a city and as a planning group in our financial stewardship to our citizens. So I think you all have done a yeoman's job, and I congratulate you on a wonderful budget presentation. Council, any questions for Mr. McPhee?
I have a couple of questions.
We'll go in turn. Ms. Gamoa.
Mr. McPhee and everybody that worked on this, thank you so much. I know you guys have been putting in some very long hours as well as answering questions through this whole process. So I know we talked about the incentive pay for the ambulance services because that's the chief, one of the chief's priorities, and you had talked about you were going to look into what that breakdown would look like. Have you guys done research on that to see? I know that you were looking at two different, like one's like an hour, an additional to the hourly pay, right? And one is a...
It's, it's an additional amount for the shift work.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. And my second question was just for the counselor for the police officers. Is it four times a year per individual or four times a year for the department?
It's four times a year, is my understanding, that they will come for the department.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you, Mayor. I hate to say this, but I'm going to say it. It seems that everything that we've tried as it relates to recycling, we're going the wrong way. Costs, putting it in the landfill, all the things that have happened. Is there any possible way to get that back into a point where at least it's not costing us thousands and thousands of dollars?
So with, with permission, I'll, I'll answer that a little bit. I'm, I'm stealing Dwayne's show, but I'll, I'll tell you what I know. One of the things that caused the recycling industry such great harm two years ago or three years ago, when we actually came and discussed this for the last rate increase or the time before, was that China basically stopped taking recyclable materials. However, I will tell you that the emerging marketplace right now for recyclables is happening, and I'm extremely optimistic that that will turn itself around in the near future. If you tell me to tell you with a crystal ball, I can't tell you that, but I will tell you that I think that is what the piece that's been missing to continue that.
Well, and, and, you know, the, the issue for me is that, from what I remember and, and before I was elected, we had a contract with Rivers, and Rivers evidently had an exit somewhere in there because we went from Rivers sending us revenues to us having to pay them to take our recycle to our landfill. And so the point is, if we, we've done such a remarkable job with all of these others, if recycling is really a leech on the city, what gives? I mean, it's a great thing, don't get me wrong, but it doesn't do any good to recycle and put it in the landfill.
Mr. Purtle.
What does it cost us to send recycle to Rivers versus sending a truck to, to the landfill?
So we take to Rivers, what's the rate? 60?
$65.
$65, and the landfill rate is?
24.
24.
So if they end up taking it out there, and we've already paid them 65, they end up doubling their money by the time they take what we send that they can't use to the landfill.
If, if, if that was their business model, yes, sir, that, that would, that they would be able to do that. I will tell you that they do shop the market for those materials and, and they do the sorting, and they have some, they, they shop the marketplace regularly. And like I said, that's largely dependent on those emerging markets, which there's a shortage of right now, and I won't, I won't argue with any of you that there's a shortage of that right now.
From my understanding, wasn't that voter-approved to continue the recycling with the rate increase? Was that not done? Thought that was...
It was council. I do believe there, there's some dangers with abandoning the recycling and then trying to go back because it's very difficult to, to, to go back once you abandon it. And so I don't know what council's expectation for that timeframe for turnaround, but I, I think that's part of the conversation because I think when you do make a, a shift in decision of whether you recycle or not recycle, I, I do think you never go back after that.
I'll remember us discussing that. We would look at it after a year or so after we, you know, implemented that cost.
Yes, sir.
So we're still not any better off now than we were then.
We're paying Rivers as we speak.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Now, does Wayne have the option to take the recycle truck straight to landfill?
Yes, but the optics of that for us, as, as opposed to our residents that are, have our conscientious and want to recycle, that's why we do such a good job when Rivers has an outage or has an equipment replacement, because I think there's been some aha, some companies have done that in the past. They've said, here's your recycle bin, and they haul it off to a landfill, and there is a public back cry about that. So yes, but we could do that. But I do think that's absolutely...
I wouldn't want to see us abandon a recycle program because of where we are right now. We need to continue to monitor it, but we don't want to be a city that does not recycle. I don't think there's any way we want to be in that.
That's not the, that's not the point. The point is, and here again, and I'm going to throw this out for discussion because this is the time we discuss, is Rivers the only act in the game.
They're the only act that makes sense from a financial standpoint. All of the others would cost us a great deal more than that.
And they are Shreveport, Tyler, where are they?
It's, it's not even, yeah, Shreveport's out, Shreveport's done. You'd have to go to Dallas.
It should be going there.
Yeah.
And, and people aren't really excited about starting up transfer stations for materials when the markets are reduced.
And reduced.
I have one more question. Where are we at on the reserve fleet for public safety, for like the fire, like on the timeline of the budget, whether that's this year or the coming years?
As far as the, the memo that I sent out a couple of weeks ago, I did not want to be presumptuous. With council, we plan to bring... With council, we plan to bring those items that are referenced in the memo to the last meeting in August, once the budget proposal was completed.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Roland, does the ARPA funds, is that part of the general fund reserve balance?
No, it is not.
Okay, so that's not, so that would still be net of that spending? We still have that?
That's correct.
You have a question, Mr. McPhee? Once again, thank you, Roland, and thank you for city staff for all your hard work in this. We're now, considering Jenny Adams, council, I'll pull off for separate discussion.
Mayor, I'd like to pull off D, please, sir.
E?
D.
D.
That's a dog.
Okay, any, anyone else?
D.
Say it again?
D.
That's what he said, was D, wasn't it?
Yeah, I said D.
Y'all both want to pull off D?
Or B.
He said D.
I want B.
You want B?
Yeah.
Okay? Anybody else want something that doesn't rhyme with a D or B?
Gee.
Okay, we'll start with B. Mr. Pirtle.
Yes, sir.
Dwayne, do we just have one camera truck?
We have one big camera truck, yes, and then we've got a smaller one that we use.
I knew at one time we had two.
Yeah.
And one was in reserve in case something like this happened, so...
No, we don't, we do not have a reserve, so we're, we're kind of footing along until we can get this back in operation, so...
Okay, that's kind of what I wanted to know. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Down to D.
And this is going to be a bonding question, so here we go. How did this happen?
Okay.
When did it happen? And how do we keep it from happening again?
Go backwards a little bit.
Okay.
So in the five years that I've been anywhere responsible for the risk budgets, this is the first time we have come to ask for money. We were notified by one of our drug and alcohol testing vendors that they were having a significant increase in rates after $71 per person. Yes, and this fund pays for both pre-employment drug alcohol testing and our workers' comp, our accidents. And it was noticed in our year-end estimates that we did in March that we might come to this point, and as we progressed, it was obvious that we would need to come forward and request funds.
Okay, so did we have some significant, what's the word I'm using, claims?
We had, yes, sir. In September, even though it was the last fiscal year, we were hit with the charges in this fiscal year. The lightning struck out at Public Works. That was 28,000 we were out of. We've had a traffic light and a pole struck by a citizen that was not insured. We've had legal fees we've had to incur, and we've had multiple storm damages that did not meet our deductibles or for property that at the time was not on the property schedule and therefore not covered.
Okay, and so, but with this, you, this, and where you guys have projected in the budget that Roland just presented, is it accounting for the additional increases on general liability and comp?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and this, this infusion in this thing will theoretically get us through this budget year intact?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anything else? Not, is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Is there a second? You have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. How does the community interest? Mr. Carpenter.
None tonight, please, sir.
Ms. Noddy.
I guess I do have one. Splash Bash, food truck vendors, popcorn stand, splash pad, and water games. August 4th, 2023, 1:00 to 5:00 p.m., Stamford Park, Splash Pad, 400 Fair Street. All ages are welcome. Complete covered swimsuits are required, so, no, I just put that in there, but please come out. Please come out and join us. Thank you.
Okay, Ray, complete swimsuits. Mr. Wade.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Roland, great job on the budget tonight, sir. I appreciate that. We are having a back-to-school community fair and free basketball camp as the students... There you go. I want to see you there, by the way, all right, in your shorts, your short shorts, uncovered. And there'll be free school supplies, family entertainment, gift bags, hygiene gift bags, things of that sort. Would love to invite everyone out. That would be August 5th from 12:00 to 4:00 at Broadland Recreation Center. That's it for me, Mayor Mack.
Thank you. Mr. Newsted.
Not at all.
Ms. Gambaola.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to congratulate Elizabeth Harris of Longview, Texas. She's 11 years old. She competed in the Future Champions Callaway World Championship for 11 to 12-year-old girls. Only two girls from Texas got to compete in her division, and she finished in 33rd place. She went up against countries like Thailand, China, New Zealand, Canada, and many others. I'd also like to wish a big congratulations to Franselli Lopez of East Texas for being our Miss East Texas at the Miss Texas Pageant. Thank you for representing our city so beautifully. And I'd like to offer our condolences to the Spring Hill individual who passed away today in the fire, and I'd like to offer prayers as well for the fire captain who was injured, and just thank you so much to our amazing public safety team and our fire department for what they do to make sure that our citizens are safe.
Mr. Pirtle.
I wanted to offer the condolences to Buster Cupid's family. He was an icon in Longview, not just in the Pine Tree area, for what he did for many, many, many years in golf, and he brought a lot of attention to this area because of that. That's it.
Mr. McPhee?
That's enough.
Okay. We have a comprehensive plan meeting. We're in the process of updating our comprehensive plan and need your input. You're invited to the public meeting at 5:30 p.m. on Monday, July 24th at Moncon Convention Center. This is where you will have the chance to come and give your input for what we will use to move forward as we did the last, that was adopted in 2015, which led to our budget, I mean, our, our bond project in 2018, and we've accomplished about 27 of the top goals in that, in that comprehensive plan, so it's time to look to the future and move forward and get another one going, so we have something for future generations. I want to just make a note, you know, we, we sometimes take for granted, but, you know, on the way up here, I passed a road crew on High Street that was doing a seal coat on the asphalt for City of Longview, and I looked inside my wonderfully air-conditioned vehicle. It was 102 degrees outside, and I was very comfortable inside, and every one of them waved at me as I went by, and I know they're burning up and they're hot as can be, so have a little bit of compassion on these people that are out there in this heat right now that are having to endure these temperatures because it's hot. And I'm so thankful they do that with such a great attitude and a wonderful spirit about them, and I wish I'd had some water to give them, but I didn't, but I will next time because they certainly deserve all of that, and I'm glad that they're doing that, and I don't, I don't have to do that. So you'll never hear me complain about a pothole because those guys work really hard, and girls too. There's men and women out there, both, so I appreciate their service. A lot to digest tonight, council. This is a lot of y'all's first time to see the budget. I've had the, I don't know, it's the fortune, the misfortune of having seen it for quite some time. There's a lot to look through, go over it, get your questions out there so you can come back at the next meeting and ask anything that has concerns for you, but overall, I think it's a wonderful presentation and a wonderful budget we have to look forward to. So thank you all for that, and I appreciate y'all's attendance. So until next time, God bless, we adjourn.